Today is a board meeting on Monday, April 28, 2014. And we'll call the meeting to order. First off is our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could just have a moment of silence, just to reflect on our duties as Board of Selectmen and our special voice that are here this morning. Okay, thank you. Per the Board of Selectmen, I need to make the announcement. Per Mass General Law, Section 30A S, excuse me, Mass General Law 30A, Section 20E, I need to ask if anyone other than LCAT is recording this meeting? If they would let me know now?
We're recording for the minutes as well.
And we're recording for the minutes. Okay, that being noted, we'll move on. Today's business today is the representatives from RG Greenly at 296 North Main Street, and also the DPW is here as well. Representatives and our building person, Mr. Feeney, is here. And I see some people from planning. And wow, we have a nice audience today. This is great. So, Mr. Greenly, if you'd like to step up and...
Sure. So, thank you for having me. And Jim Walsh is in order in the building as well.
Certainly, he's more than welcome to step up. We just asked if you're going to speak, if you step up to the mic so that the LCAT can pick up the audio.
So, again, thank you for having us today. We're, I guess, here to discuss the issues remaining with the submittal on the owner's behalf for 296 North Main Street. The, so we are in receipt of the memo that was sent on Friday by Mr. Brewer. And we have reviewed that. We're still in the process of understanding what some of the costs may be to address all of the issues that were mentioned. And the memo was, I guess, from the DPW to the Board of Selectmen. And so I think that there are a number of issues in that memo that, you know, the ownership would be prepared to modify the proposals to accommodate some of the needs of the town. And we believe that the cost of completing a number of those improvements will not be substantial enough for the owner to need to modify the price. And with the exception being the sprinkler system. Which if the town would like the owners of the building to deliver the building with a sprinkler system in place, I think it's safe to say that we could do that for an additional $50,000. And, you know...
So that's installed?
Yeah, we could probably get that installed and keep it within the 1.2 million.
Oh, so there wouldn't be an increase?
No, no, the, there would be an increase from the, from the purchase price.
Okay.
Right. The 1.2 comes from, I think, a allotment from the town at the last...
And it would be under that.
Okay, so it would be under 1.2 million with the, with all the corrections?
With everything taken care of and the sprinkler system.
Okay, alright. Is there anything else you want to discuss?
Uh, no, I mean, I...
Just so that we're all on the same page?
Sure.
If you would like to go through exactly what we're talking about?
The, and a lot of this, we, you know, we were given this on Friday.
Right.
So, you know, we're kind of scrambling to get these numbers and understand exactly what you guys' needs are. The, as it relates to the third floor, which I believe is what you would initially intend on occupying, and, but if we had a better understanding of what the town's intentions were in terms of what areas of the building the town intends on occupying immediately, then we could respond to some specific requests within that, that space.
Okay.
For example, the, if the town is not going to utilize the space as is, then it doesn't make sense for us to go in and change all the door hardware for doors that are then eventually going to go away or whatever. That would seem to be wasteful in our minds. If the town would like to communicate to us the, the work that the town either is going to do themselves, hire somebody to do, or if you would like the space to be delivered, ready to, you know, yeah, finished turnkey, ready, ready to be occupied by the town, we could do that. We would just need to know what the town is looking for. So, and, and, and we cannot necessarily do that for free, depending on what it is.
So you're talking about moving the walls, the removable walls?
Yes.
And making the office space to the dimensions? Most of that you can do?
Yep. We just need to understand really the scope of work so that we can say, we can't obligate ourselves to do whatever you want up there. But there's, there's, there's a, the owner is flexible and willing, obviously...
Because you're saying there's a cost. I'm hearing him saying there is no cost.
From, from what I've seen that was requested, other than the sprinkler system, our, our bid included finishing that upstairs ready for occupancy.
Okay.
With carpet, perhaps moving some of the walls and taking care of...
Okay.
We do that with any tenant.
Okay. Alright, so I'm looking at the memo, and I'm going to go down piece by piece then.
Okay.
And then I would like also to hear from DPW.
Sure.
Maybe Mr. Feeney could, could come up as well as Mr. Brewer. And then I also want to get my, my board members also to chime in.
Yep.
The A, what I'm looking at is the ADA push button entry building, excuse me, entry to building with automated doors. Is that, are you including that?
The owners are prepared to include that, yes.
Okay. The new building access system?
That, I think that is the...
Okay, well, it's listed as a separate... Mr. Feeney, could you give some clarification on that one for me, please?
That is our existing security access...
Could you please come up though, so that we can hear you? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we get the information out correctly.
That will be your...
Thank you.
Existing security access system. Our continuum system, our swipe card system that we currently use to access all our buildings in town.
Okay. So it's not the same thing?
Uh, it's, okay, so it's not the same thing. And I, we don't really know what that, what it is, you know? So, I don't know if the town has a vendor that they use to install that.
We do, but this obviously goes along with all the fiber network and everything else, our infrastructure which we have in the town right now. So, that would be obviously something that needs to be addressed with fiber and everything else. So, there's a lot of things that go along with that security access system.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say that it's probably, probably better for the town to do that on themselves and work with the vendor directly.
So that's not included, okay. The fiber optics, which is what we were just talking about?
That would be the town.
That's the town, okay. The painting, you said, would be you.
Yep.
The flooring would be you.
Yes.
Telephone upgrades would be us?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Did we get a confirmation from IT department with regards to that? Because it says on the memo to be confirmed by IT department. We haven't gotten a confirmation, okay.
But our existing system is a voice over IP system throughout our building, so I'm assuming that goes along with the fiber optics and everything else.
Okay.
Communication with the building.
Okay. A fully addressable fire alarm, you said you would take care of that?
Yes.
Okay. The HVAC upgrades?
The owner is prepared to replace the condensers that serve the entire building.
Okay.
We've just had all of those inspected. And there are five of them. Four were in good condition. And one needs replacement. But if there's a concern, we'd be willing to replace all five of them.
Okay. When we went through the building on Friday, Mr. Feeney, you had mentioned that some of that was so outdated into something about the hardware? I just want to make sure, while we have everybody in the same room.
The existing refrigerant in the existing units is R-22. We no longer make R-22 condensing units.
Okay.
It's all 134A. So, when you replace a condensing unit, you need to replace the coil also in that air handling unit. So it's not just the condensing unit, it's actually the coil in here handling.
Okay, so...
We would replace those.
Okay.
We have a, the price, we got a price from D for doing that at $2,500 a unit.
Okay, alright. The ADA hardware and interior doors, I did hear you say that you would do that.
Yeah, and...
As long as you know what we want.
Yeah, I mean, we, I don't, I don't think, again, it wouldn't make sense to just go in, like, some of those units are, are currently leased to tenants. It wouldn't make sense to go in and change their doors. Because as the town moves in, they may want to change that. If they, if the town eventually takes over the remaining space, who knows?
I would anticipate that we would.
Oh, yes.
Because we're not in the business of being landlords. And I'm speaking for me. I certainly would want to talk to...
Sure, and I, but I would say the, the, the doors that are going to be utilized by the town...
Initially.
Initially, we'll change the hardware on those doors.
Okay, just on those, but not on the remaining?
Correct. In the common area and in the space that the town's going to use.
But that is up for a conversation, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we want to, we want to...
Well, this is up for a conversation.
Okay, alright.
I mean, you know, typically when you outfit a rental space or lease space or purchase with somebody, do you have to sit down and talk about what's, what's best?
Exactly, and I think that's...
And exactly what the options are?
We're, we're here to make sure that, you know, that the voters and everybody is on the same page and know exactly what we're voting on. Because I didn't know, so... The fire sprinkler system, you just said, stated that you, that would be included.
Yeah, well, we'll provide an alternate cost. If the town wants us to include the sprinkler system, we'll provide an alternate cost.
Okay.
Which will just be a pass-through of what it, what it's going to cost them to install.
Okay. And I know there were some questions with regards to the elevator. I know we have had conversations with regards to expanding that elevator to make it larger. And you said that that was a possibility? Is that also included?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, the elevator's the same size that we proposed initially as in the medical building behind us.
I understand that.
And there's ambulances in there all day long.
Really? But when I, when I was looking...
They're commonly, I mean, they're commonly...
When I was looking at these, just a layperson, when I looked at it, it didn't seem like an elevator would, that a stretcher would fit in there. That was, and that is a concern. I know if my mom was up on that floor, I would want to make sure that that elevator was large enough to put an elevator, to put a stretcher in to get her down safely. So, you may not feel it's necessary, but if this is what, you know...
If it's, if the town wants it, we're willing to do it.
That's great. Okay, the next thing with regards to the egress. I know we spoke this morning about having another exit. And you said that that was possible on...
It is possible. It, the, the building inspector was not requiring it. The, it would just be installing a, a new stairwell and a, and a new exit door. And it's possible to do that. We would, again, sort of need to understand a little bit more about what the town will be doing upstairs, if it's going to be one unit or, or two separate units, or, you know, are you going to combine those, those two? Like we talked about behind the stairwell, removing that wall.
But just for the people who are listening, just explain that out. Well, I guess you would have to see the building.
Yeah, I mean, so the second, the third, the top floor is 3,200 square foot footprint. And there is a stair, a stairwell that is right in the middle. The elevator will also be at the stairwell. And so if we were to add a, another means of egress, it would go on one side of the building. And so in order to do that, we would have to take away from a, a corner office on the second floor as the stairwell will come, will come down and then exit, looking at the building from the parking lot on the right side. And it's possible if, if there were two...
And you also would lose some on the third floor too, right?
Yeah, yeah, you lose the, the...
About a half a room?
Yeah.
You say a half a, yeah.
So, you know, it depends. If, if the, if those two units upstairs are going to be separate, then that may, that may, you may then want two stairwells, one on each side. You know, it's, it, it depends what the, it depends what the town is going to be doing up there.
Mr. Feeney, is there anything that you would like to say? Mr. Brewer, nothing now? Ms. Federich?
Sure, through the chair. One, one item that, we got two different numbers on was parking. I know when Bruce went through, and, did you get, Bruce, did you get your figure from the town?
Yes.
The 27 spaces?
Thirty, 32 spaces.
So, that must have been incorrect. I think I just got it off the GIS.
Okay.
The town or the mall.
Because I noticed, you know, based on the, on the...
We, if it's, if it's an old plan, a few years back, we redid the parking lot, and there were some islands in it that were removed when we did that and got some more spaces.
So there's actually 32 spaces?
32 spaces.
Okay, because one thing, and I know you got this memorandum. We have approximately 40 employees, which means probably 40 parking spaces that we'd need also. This, and then once again, this was something that you guys didn't seem to agree with. There was a, there was some comment about you having a joint arrangement with the other building to share spaces.
Yeah, there's...
Is that like a, you know, like a handshake?
It's a telephone call. That ends with a telephone call. It's, we let them in the winter when they plow so they can stack up snow. They lose some parking spaces. And since the building's been half vacant, we let them.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, people that are in the building now, there's, there's never more than six or eight cars here.
Right, and getting to that, now you have, if I remember correctly, when Brendan, when you and I first went through, you just signed, is it two or three new leases?
We actually just signed, or are in the process of signing another tenant for three years to occupy a single office in the lower level. There was a newer three-year lease that's now, now maybe...
Two and a half from?
Yeah, two and a half. And on the lower level.
Yeah, because I remember the top floor is vacant, but the other two had, I think the other two had all fairly new leases.
Yeah, the, the tenant on the second floor is up for renewal. So that may be another three years. And we've been, quite frankly, I mean, we've been kind of, you know, playing defense a little bit because we don't know what's ideal for the town.
Right, right.
You know, and so...
Alright, and the only other question I had was, and I think Bruce, bathroom situation? I know there's something about the downstairs bathrooms going to be unisex?
Yeah, that was, I think that was addressed once we did another walkthrough because there's an existing custodial closet down there. I thought that was the only one in the building, but after revisiting that, there is other slop sinks for a custodial to access. I thought that was going to be eliminated.
Yeah, because there's one on each floor.
One on each floor, correct.
Actually, there's two on the lower floor.
Right, so, after reviewing that again, I saw it wasn't an issue.
Thank you, that's, that's all I had.
No problem.
Yeah, you got one tenant, that's month to month there, right?
Yes, right, on the, on the lower level.
And, and where the elevator comes out onto that second floor there, you're going to have to push that railing out?
Yeah, that, yes.
Because if they take a bet on it, they won't be able to turn it there.
Yeah, whatever, whatever, there's an ADA requirement for that, and it'll have to come out like a foot or so.
Yeah, I think you need four feet from the elevator door as a landing area.
Right, yeah. Right, that's, that stairwell, like, you're going to put it on the other side? Does that have to be so people...
Well, so, just to clarify, we, we didn't say we would put in a stairwell.
Right.
But we talked about the town, if the town were to require one, we could investigate what the actual requirements would be. And if a stairwell needed to go in to come down from the top floor, then I just described one area where it could be.
Right, yeah. Would that be as wide as the stairwell that we walked up and down this morning?
It would be to code. I, I don't know exactly, you know...
Whatever, whatever the ADA code is for that, you know.
Alright, that's all I got.
Alright. Since we have a very nice audience, are there any questions from the public that they'd like to address or any board members? Please.
How many spaces do we have here?
How many parking spaces do we have here? How many parking spaces do we have currently? Mr. Feeney?
I don't know.
Hmm, good question. Well, what is, give me your name...
My other question is...
More than 27.
You only have 32, we have 40 employees. What's our resolution in that?
We don't know yet.
We aren't, are the, do the 40 employees reside in one place now?
Yeah, in this, I believe in this building.
But what happens is we have some...
So there's 40 dedicated parking places to those 40 employees out here?
I'm not positive. I think we have a shared agreement with, with Falcone's, with their property, to use spaces and vice versa. You know, like the Spallettos of the world and everything use some of our spaces at night when they have an overflow over this way. And I believe during the day, we get to use some of their spaces. But I'm not exactly sure how they're broken up within the parking lot.
Yeah. Would, would you expect those 40 employees to all be there at the same time?
Well, sometimes I think that there are some that are transit and go from building to building. But I think, I'm thinking, that it would be ultimately best that we prepare that all 40 might be there at one, one point.
The only thing that I can add is that, at one time...
I did see you, Rocco.
My firm had probably 35, 40 employees, and the plant construction had another five or six in there. And we never really had a problem.
Okay, so you have 41 employees and there was never a problem? Okay. Yes, Mr. Alco.
Can the senior center be used for parking for the town employees? Plenty of parking over there.
Okay.
I was going to mention that too.
I would certainly put that down for an idea. This is what this is about, sir?
The existing senior center, based on the building envelope, does not even have, under planning requirements, enough parking spots now.
As it is.
As it is.
Are those, are those spaces utilized?
I can go there on a Thursday. Yes, I'm just throwing it out there as information.
Russ first and then certainly...
I hate when that happens.
Several weeks ago, there was a presentation...
Could you speak up a little more to make sure that you heard?
Several weeks ago, there was a presentation by the Board of Public Works...
Yes.
To this board about renovation of this facility.
Yes.
And we have this proposal. So when does...
This proposal came first.
Yep. When is the Board of Selectmen intend to take a vote on which proposal to move forward with? And have they given some consideration on how to pay for it, either one? We have town meeting in three weeks from today. Speaking as a private citizen, I know that usually funding or financial orders go to, if it's going to be something that large that would have to be bonded, would go to capital planning, and then the appropriations would also have to take a peek at it. And I would then, would hope that this board would do some type of public meeting prior to town meeting to spread the word for people who then would go to town meeting. And I'm just wondering, is there a timeline set up? And consideration on, like I said, how to pay for it?
I know, I know that there's a warrant article for both.
Yep.
Am I correct on that, Nick? And we have not pulled either one of them. We are undecided with regards to that right now. Hopefully soon to be decided. There was quite a few, we just, as you know, we just received the DPW's proposal that was presented to the board. And we certainly need some time to evaluate that. And then with that came some questions from, with regards to some of the items that they were talk, talking points that they were talking to. And we wanted to give Mr., uh, help me with your name.
Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Walsh, an opportunity to come in and just give more clarification to it. And so that's why we had both people in one place, so we could ask the questions. Because we do understand that time is of an, of the essence. So with regards to the funding, yes, that we do need to look at that as well.
And my, my question is, what was the plan? Is the plan to move everybody out of this building and put them in a new building? Or are you going to keep some people here? Or what is the plan?
Originally, the plan was to move everyone from here into there.
What were you going to do with this building?
Because at, at the time, with all the improvements that were going to be made there, it would be a more accessible building for the townspeople. And then, and then with this building, I know there were talks about moving some numbers in the school department. And we would, you know, be in discussion with them to move them here. Because obviously, schools are getting overcrowded, they're talking about expanding the schools, so that was our initial thought. But we, sorry.
No, please.
But we, you know, obviously, we tried to act on this because we've had numerous stops and starts over the years. I know, I know you folks in appropriations have, are wondering, you know, it's a tight cash situation right now, but if we had all the money that we've put into, put into space studies in the last 14 years, then we might have been able to move quicker. But all those came to a grinding halt. So we're just trying to get, you know, we're trying to get to a point where we can move forward. You know what I mean? So, so that's where we, basically where we stand now. I know when we came to the town in September, I, everyone was in agreement that, you know, we should do something. And that's why the, we got it voted in. I know now, I think there may have been a, a change in the, in the opinion as far as funding. So, you know, that, that's something else we have to take into consideration.
Well, just members of the Board of Public Works visited with the Appropriations Committee last week. And I'll let you know what we told them.
Certainly.
There is no raise and appropriate because we're at the levy limit. We're at our minimum for free cash, as, you know, as opposed to operating budget, which really leaves a debt exclusion. So unless you want to dip below the state recommended requirement to have a 5% for free cash, that's where we're at right now. So, if that helps you in any way, thanks for talking.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions to be brought forward at this time? Any explanations, any closing thoughts?
Well, I guess...
Back to you.
We would like to see or hear from you on what you think your deadline is.
You're not going to get that answer today right now. And I know you would like to have it, but we have a regular scheduled meeting tomorrow. And we're going to take all the information and certainly get to you as soon as possible with regards to that. But I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay.
Okay?
And, and we would also like an answer... And, and we would also like an answer as well. I mean, we, if, if, you know, if we wait another month and find out that, you know, the town never had any money to pay for this, I mean, we, you know, the, as, as, Jim, as the owner, has been hanging in there for a number of months now, so that would be pretty disappointing.
Understood, understood. Mr. Pedersen, anything, conditions to add? Ms. Pedersen? Okay. Then this meeting, I'll take a motion to close this meeting.
So, moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.